Okay, before we start our meeting, I just want to remind everybody in the audience, if you'd like to comment during your public comment session, please make sure that you have filled out either the form that Meghan just probably took, or there was one over on the table, but you've got both of them now?
I put it on the podium.
Okay. I think we should probably throw it on the table because people end up talking or wanting to sign up while people are standing at the podium. So with that, okay, all right, so with that, let's call our meeting to order 7:02. Give Meghan a chance to get back before I say, Meghan, will you please take the role?
Davis.
Lampy.
Here.
Britton.
Here.
Bart.
Look.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Wetzel.
Here.
Romline.
Here.
Thank you. If you would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you for leading our Pledge of Allegiance, Jane Ellen. You're not on mute, just in case you didn't realize that.
Oh.
It's okay. All right. The first item on our agenda is the minutes of the council meeting from July 5th. Comments or questions on those minutes? All right, very good. Our next item is comments and suggestions from citizens present. I will turn it over to the clerk in just a moment here, but if you come to the microphone, please just state your name and address. Meghan, remark.
Donna Mueller.
Hi, I'm Donna Mueller from 621 Brookstone Way. And I know you're getting really tired of hearing about this, but I have sat and listened, and I just feel like I want to express myself, and just me personally, I'm not going to preach, I just want to share my heart, and just, I just want to make a plea for something to take place, something to happen, for changes for our community. My husband and I moved here with our four children 19 years ago this very month, and we were living in Germany for over 12 years, working there, and when it came time to moving back, we had to decide where do we want to live? Well, both sets of parents lived in Illinois, and even 19 years ago, nobody wants to live in Illinois, so we didn't either, but we wanted to live close enough but far enough away. My husband had gotten his degrees here in Watertown, and so he knew a lot of people, had friends, and we knew there were good biblical churches here. We knew this was a good conservative community. We knew that Watertown had a lot to offer, a lot of good things, a lot of family-friendly things, and so we decided to move here. So in the meantime, we're both full-time workers, we're taxpayers, we're homeowners, we vote at every election because we want to be involved, we want to make a difference in our little corner of the world. I do want to make it, oh, we're also, we back the badge, you know, and we, I bake cookies for the police. I mean, we're just, you want us living here. You should want us here, because we're just good citizens, we're law-abiding people, and that's why I appreciate having a say, and I just want to feel heard, and I know you've heard a lot, and I don't understand, I admit I don't understand all about the politics, and what has to take place, what ought to take place, what could take place. I just want to express my own heart, coming from a mom. I'm not a homophobe. I know many transgender people, and some of them are very close to me, and some of them I love very much, and I don't condone their lifestyle, or their decisions, or even their worldview, but I love them. I don't hate people. I'm not here, I would never throw something at people, I would never even go to the park and yell at people or cause a scene, I'm just, I'm not that way, and a lot of people like me are just, we're not that way. We really do want to feel heard because we chose to live here, and we liked the way it was, and we just, we want to maintain what we've had here, decency in our city. I want to, I have a few quotes that I want to share, because you may know them, you may not, but there are drag queens that have made this very clear. Little Miss Hot Mess of Tucson, Arizona said, "Drag should always be about disrupting the norms and upending the status quo." He also admitted that drag is a political tool used to destabilize kids' early understanding about sex. The purpose is to challenge the dominance of heterosexual discourse, to present alternative sexual lifestyles to children. And I found that shocking when I found this, when I read this, because at least he's being honest, but it's really not their place to educate our children about alternative sexual lifestyles. I believe that's the place of a parent. Also, the key word that I found very disturbing was, their purpose is to destabilize our children when it comes to early understanding about sexuality. That's also not their place, and I don't believe that children ought to be sexualized one way or the other. When they're young, they should be innocent, and they should just be children. So, in my opinion, the way I see this, when you are creating destabilizing your children, you are causing confusion, and we have a term for that now that we didn't used to have, and it's gender dysphoria, and this is in part where that comes from, and I just can't see condoning that in our fine city. Another person I wanted to quote was RuPaul, I think he's in New York. "Drag isn't for everyone," he said, "and there's enough strong language, sexual innuendos, and over-the-top behavior to make it an iffy choice for young viewers." Again, he's being honest. It isn't appropriate for young viewers, and I think we have to be honest about it ourselves and recognize this, because here it comes to Riverside Park, bring your kids. And I understand laws are, I know you have to deal according to law, and what's on the books already, I know that we all have First Amendment rights, and honestly, I began to come here with a different opinion, and I really don't want more government control. None of us really do. I just want something to be done. We are a divided city on this issue, and we're never going to agree, because we're all coming from different worldviews, and there's this major group and that major group, and you can't please everybody. So my question is, who are you going to try to please, and why? And I know it isn't about maybe your personal opinions and your personal beliefs, but just to ensure the protection of our children in the park. I personally don't agree and don't like that the drag queens are reading to children in the library, but on the other hand, I understand that they didn't walk in from off the streets, their parents are bringing them to that, and so the parents have made a decision. So I don't like it, but there it is. But in a public park, I just feel that that is not the place for that. It's a place, they're indoctrinating on purpose, we have heard their agenda. There can be parents that unwittingly have just dropped off their children to go swimming, or to play in the park, or maybe there's a picnic going on and the children run off, they hear the commotion, they watch it, the parents are in conversation, they don't even know, and children are hearing this, and the parents are not behind this, they don't want their children to hear this. It's a public place, and I feel that this should be behind closed doors. And of course, people can make their own choices, everyone does, but we're talking about the children who are the future of this city. And I just want to end by saying that, you know, my husband and I are contributors in Watertown. No, we didn't contribute $1 million to any fund, to any project. We contribute into people, one-on-one, but we're also contributors of a different way. We've invested, like some of you have. We lost one of our sons to the Rock River in Watertown two and a half years ago, and so he lies in one of our fine cemeteries, and that connects us forever to Watertown. We could get mad with what goes on and move away, I don't know where we'd find a place that's, you know, we like Watertown, we've never regretted moving here, but we're always going to be connected to this city, and so we care. Until the day we lie in the grave next to our son, we have invested interest, and we care about the future of this city, and when all of us are dead and gone, what are we going to be left with if this continues? I feel like this movement is gaining ground, and Christians are being marginalized more and more, and I just want to be heard. I'm not telling you what to do, I really don't know what the answer is, because I don't want more government, more regulations, but maybe things need to be tweaked just to protect our children. And so just with that in mind, I thank you for hearing me out, and hopefully, we don't have to talk about this too much more.
Thank you.
Tammy Cedarburg.
Tammy, I'm going to ask you, can you, is there any way to get the mic closer to you? They're having a little...
Hello. Thank you for listening to me. I'm quoting someone who is with Gays Against Groomers. She said, "If I would have understood when I was younger that fighting for my rights as a lesbian would mean allowing children to drag shows, attaching child molesters to our community, and allowing children to change their sex before they even know what their favorite color is, I would never have done it. This festival that the Unity Project is wanting to put on in the name of unity and acceptance is truly more than what meets the eye. I submit to you that there are concerning consequences for the children of Watertown. Let's say that just even one child, even as young as 10, is convinced to transition to a different gender. Those adults around this little individual 10-year-old with a skill set, and wherewithal, and money, and transportation, and adult encouragement, would be the ones to assist and make it possible for the child to do all that it takes to transition, because children don't have it in themselves to really carry on something like that for themselves, much like if they had an illness or something, you know, they would need assistance to be able to go to the doctor and to do all that it is that they would need to do. So there are steps that are taken to make transitioning possible. First of all, there are puberty blockers, and the side effects to these, and I'm just giving you a broad brush, I mean, there's so much more than meets the eye, and I would encourage you actually to listen to discussions and information about what happens to the body of a child that undergoes these things, but here are side effects of them. First of all, the first stage will be puberty blockers, and the side effects that leads to, for example, infertility adversely affects bone and brain development, so in other words, say that a child of age 10 goes into transition and takes puberty blockers, and maybe they change their mind, but they have osteoporosis by the time they're 15 or 18 years old. You know, what an irreversible, what a bridge too far, I guess, and I find this so regretful. The neurophysiological ability is being affected, sexual development, greater dissatisfaction with body image. Then there is what the second phase is, is cross-sex hormones, the side effects being cardiovascular disease, blood clots, liver dysfunction, cancer, all in, you know, the body of an otherwise healthy child, okay? And if I'm not mistaken, these puberty blockers and cross-sex hormones are still underneath FDA approved, they're not yet under FDA approval, so these are all very experimental, so our children are being experimented upon. Then there are the surgical procedures. Plainly put, sexual healthy tissue is being amputated. It's just a bridge too far gone. What if, for example, you know, you have, for example, men, their brains aren't fully developed until they're age 25, and you make these decisions as a 10-year-old, you know, and then with an adult facilitating them. It's just really shocking to think of the implications of what the rest of their lives would mean, and the regret that there would be in what would be an otherwise a very healthy life. It's undoubtedly concerning to me as a parent, and I hope that it is also to you. How would it be a loving thing to assist a child under this end? I don't think that it is. I submit to you that it would be instead a considered a loving thing to walk a child to health and well-being, and to embrace his created gender. I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Tiffany Schultz.
Tiffany Schultz, 1405 O'Conwell Avenue, apartment 6, 53094, if you need it. I'm really just here today to tell the people of the Unity Project that there are actually people in this community who support them. The only people who have seemed to be speaking up here are the people who are so vehemently against it, and I don't understand why. We are supposed to be a community that accepts everybody and doesn't preach, that we only accept certain people because of what they believe in. It is absolutely morally repugnant to dislike somebody because of how they want to dress or what they want to perform. This is a performance. If you don't want to go, don't go. If you don't support it, don't show up to try to make a fuss. Those of us who do support these people, and do want to include these people, should have the right to do that. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Bentley Awonell.
Is that the time that we call it, or it's just the time that we call the name?
Oh, we can't.
Nope, no reordering.
Just in response to the young lady who spoke, we just don't want without consent children in Riverside Park coming across potentially sexualizing performance or material. Drag queens are known to be explicit, explicit and sexual in nature. I think we all know that, but it's not about not including people, et cetera, it's about non-consent of minors being exposed to sexual content. This board was the city council, the mayor, city attorney, police chief have been presented with pictures from Fort Atkinson, drag queen laying flat on back, legs spread, crats exposed with little children looking on. That's what we're concerned about. It's not about not including people, not valuing people. Every individual has the same value, very much. So that's the concern. Under the color of law, turning a blind eye to what they all knew what was going on, to what we all know what is going on. Some of the most atrocious acts in American history have been committed under the color of law, turning a blind eye to the basic elementary facts of what was actually going There have been many city councils, state governments, county governments in past history that have participated and turned a blind eye, under the color of law, to discriminating against African-American people. We all saw that chapter in history. It ended, thankfully, but many county governments, city governments, state governments have participated in turning a blind eye. It was their duty to resist such a perverse thing, to turning a blind eye to what was actually going on. You would never turn a blind eye to basic elemental facts. If there was a Harley Fest being requested in Riverside Park, you would never turn a blind eye to the fact that Harley's by nature make noise, they are noise makers, in your consideration of giving a license out for an event. You would never turn a blind eye to the fact that drag queens by nature are explicit and sexual, or would you? You know, every other group that has sought a license from the city council has had to deal with the fact that the council, the mayor, city attorney has been very honest about what's going on with that group. The drag queen who's coming to perform, first of all, you've been presented with the picture at Fort Atkinson, I understand that's not the drag queen coming. The drag queen coming to perform, we've mentioned the video that pops up. I got tits, I got ASS, my sexual desire. What a shock, drag queens, if you don't turn a blind eye, are that. They're inherently that. I mean, a male getting tits, ASS, and whatever, this is what's going on. Everybody knew what was going on, when under the color of law, people were discriminated against in city councils. Everybody knew. Everybody knows what's going on with drag queens. I think the woman who was up here first gave the testimony of the drag queen, saying that they shouldn't really be connecting to minors and children. Everybody knows what's going on. First Amendment protection cannot be used under the color of law to protect and turn a blind eye to what everybody knows what's going on. That type of thing happened when African-Americans were discriminated against, people turned a blind eye. The children of Watertown must be protected and have their rights protected, and not be exposed to what we all know is going on. Drag queens are inherently explicit and sexual. This cannot be done under the color of law and under the First Amendment. In fact, it was highly illegal under the color of law to do that with discrimination in African-American people, and it's highly illegal to use the First Amendment to allow children to be exposed to what we all know is inherently a sexual, sensual situation. Everybody turned a blind eye for a period of time in Loudoun County, Virginia. Everybody knew what was going on. Everybody, under the color of law, mayors, county, county officials, county attorney, city officials, they were all there. Groups that called themselves unity, they were all there, turning a blind eye. When the rights of minors were not protected, under the color of law, it allowed males into women's bathrooms, girls' bathrooms in schools, and then those girls were raped. There was a blind eye turned to what was actually going on, and girls and children suffered the consequences. I want to read one of the brilliant authors esteemed in the halls of literature and writing and intellect. He captured what is going on so well here in Watertown and across the country. "The greatest evil," he wrote, "is not done now, in those sordid dens of crime that Dickens loved to paint. It is not even done in the concentration camps and labor camps, in those we see the final result. But it is conceived, ordered, moved, seconded, carried, minuted, in clear, carpeted, warmed, and well-lighted offices, by quiet men with white collars, and cut fingernails, and smooth-saven cheeks, and trimmed beards, who do not need to raise their voices." Mayor, city council, men and women on the council, on the city council, city attorney, police chief. We are about to create a growing environment of ability to exploit Watertown's children, sexualize, take down barriers that exist now to protect Watertown's children, by turning a blind eye to the nature of what is actually going on. And it must not be done under the color of law or First Amendment-protected expression. It was highly illegal to misuse the law when African-Americans were discriminated using, and it is highly illegal to use the law to turn a blind eye and call it First Amendment- protected expression, when we all know what's going on with drag queens.
Thank you, sir. No other comment? Okay. We do have another opportunity at the end of our council meeting for comment as well. If you'd like to stick around and comment for that one, you can sign up at the sheet at this table. With that, let's move on to reports. You all have the housing board from May 19th, park and rec from June 6th, licensing board from June 7th, tourism from June 9th, police and fire from June 13th, senior center advisory board from June 15th, the planning commission from June 27th, finance from June 27th, site plan review from July 11th, and public works from July 12th. Does anybody have any comments or questions on that long list of minutes? Mr. Lampy?
I do. Finance committee on June 27th, I believe that's report H on page 21. Two things there. Item three regarding review and take action, the one-sided parking, I don't know if we documented how that passed. I recollect that was passed. Number three. June 27th, number three.
The last sentence?
Yep.
Yeah, it just looks like the last sentence was omitted.
To approve the required widening to maintain parking on both sides of East Main. I'm in the right spot, right? So I have motion made by Britton, seconded by Bart, to approve the required widening to maintain parking on both sides of East Main?
I do. How did, did we pass it?
Oh, I follow you. We did. So we should update that. We just need the vote.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I was like, what am I missing here?
Yeah.
What am I missing? Okay, yep.
The other one that caught my eye was number seven, just a misspelling of my name.
It was corrected at the committee.
Thank you.
We were looking all for it.
Always know you are.
We'll make that adjustment on the, thank you. Anybody else on this one? Let's go to communications and recommendations. We do have one employee recognition for tonight. We had a little snack booth with Lynn, but we do have Caroline Anderson here, and Peg, I believe, is going to be providing some comments, so I invite you both up. We are recognizing Caroline for 10 years at the library, and before, I'll write this to you, okay? Before Peg starts, I will tell you, I walk, actually run in and out of the library a lot, to and from meetings, and every time I see you, you're always very kind, and smiling and welcoming, and I think that's important as I'm breaking a sweat running late to a meeting. So thank you for your 10 years and your kindness, and I'm sure Peg has even more to add.
Yes, so I wanted this low, so. I was contacted by Stephanie to write a few words about Carrie for tonight's meeting, and I commented to Carrie that I was happy that she was attending the council meeting tonight for her recognition. Her reply, "I am honored and humbled to work for the city of Watertown and the library," which speaks volumes about Carrie. Speaking about and recognizing library team members is one of my favorite aspects of my job, to let council members and the mayor know a little bit about the people who dedicate themselves to making Watertown a great place to live. So it is an honor to recognize Carrie for her 10 years of service. Like many of us, Carrie transitioned from a part-time position to a full-time position based on her skills, knowledge, strong work ethic, and leadership. She is dedicated to the library, library patrons, and her coworkers. She volunteers to help out whenever and wherever needed, and can do so because she is cross-trained in all four departments in the library. On top of her everyday desk shifts responsibilities, she enters and catalogs all of our library materials that our patrons and the other 23 libraries in our system can locate all of our materials in our shared catalog, from books to snowshoes to cake pans and hotspots, one of her favorites. She's the one to create the catalog record. But I'm not done. She is also one of our go-to staff members when an iPad, tablet, phone, overdrive, or other technology question pops up. Not only is she a whiz at the technical aspects of her job, but she is understanding, compassionate, and knows our patrons by name. She has a thorough understanding of the philosophy and mission of public libraries to a community, always ready to learn a new skill and teach others if needed. And above all, she's just a really nice person. She keeps me on my toes, and since her office space is now located outside of my office, she often appears, "Hey, Carrie," and she always replies with a helpful response. On behalf of the library team, the library board of trustees, and myself, thank you. Thank you for all you do for the library and our patrons. Your hard work has made a difference.
Barb, do you want to come up too, please?
Barb, do you want to come up too, please? Barb, come up?
Oh, okay.
All right. Barb is her circulation supervisor at the library, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was lovely. All right. Not quite as exciting, but still riveting reading, is the Fire Department Monthly Report. Anybody have questions in that report for the chief? Right. I think next month we're planning a revamped aesthetic version of the report, correct? So it might look a little different by next month. Similar content, but... All right. Our next item is an update from the city attorney on our special event procedures. So I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. I want to begin by thanking the public for coming to the council meetings, commenting on special events, and really participating in government, voicing their concerns with the community, and encourage them to continue to do so in addition to other topics. The purpose of this report is to explain the process of special events within the city, address some of the common questions that we've heard from citizens. I will not be addressing any act or act on any religious arguments, and that is in regards to the First and Fourteenth Amendments, which prohibit the government from establishing religion or prohibitively the free exercise of persons' religious beliefs. And finally, I intend to explain these actions and reason for them. Special events within the city of Watertown are created by permits that are applied to with the city clerk. The city clerk then takes that permit application and submits it to all of the other departments within the city. The city department heads then review the application, the events, the proposed purpose, where it's going to happen, what kind of day, and then determines if there's any concerns that that department has in relation to their department. If a concern does exist, the department then makes contact with the event organizers and tries to work with the event organizers to ensure that any concerns are addressed. And then once all concerns are addressed, the event is approved and the city clerk issues a permit for that event. The purpose of special event permitting is not to prohibit special events or individuals from hosting those events within the city. It's so that the city's aware of what's going on and can assist people in having events that they plan in a safe manner. One of the main comments that have come up with recent special events is that the event proposed for July 30th with the immunity project is adult in nature, adult nature events. It is true that drag shows can be adult-natured. However, discussions with the event organizers have made it clear that they are aware the event is taking place in a public park and that they do not intend for the drag show to be part of obscene, that they aren't looking for that type of an event. To clarify, obscene is defined by the state of Wisconsin in statute 944.21, and it is defined as conduct that the average person, based on today's community standards, would find, shows a sexual conduct that has an excessive interest in sexual matters. Now, it's a very complex definition, and a lot of those words are further defined by that statute. Community refers to the state community of Wisconsin. It's not simply a local community, a municipality, it's the entire state. Sexual conduct means that the individual is engaging or showing sexual intercourse, sodomy, feciality, necrophilia, human secretion, masturbation, sadism, masochism, fellatio, conundrum, or the lewd exhibition of human genitals. Further, in order to proceed on a claim against somebody doing something obscene, the statute requires the Attorney General of the state of Wisconsin to determine the allegations of an obscene performance or material prior to any civil or criminal charges being filed. That's going to require them to look at what's happened and to be able to make a determination as to whether or not something obscene has occurred. Another question that's come up is why the event is at the park. And the simple answer to that is because the city does not dictate the location, time, or content of special events. Citizens or organizations inform the city of where, when, and what events they want to host, and the city works with them to try and ensure that they're able to do so within the confines of the law and in a way that does not interfere with other planned events. I also want to take a moment to recognize the efforts of the event organizers for the July 30th event. Both events currently planned have spoken with city staff. They've worked with us to ensure that the event will go forward smoothly, and both organizations have indicated a desire for a peaceful event that day where they're allowed to present their arguments and positions. At this point, the city intends to continue to work with all special event applicants to ensure that each applicant is able to host their event in a safe manner. The police department does intend to have a presence at both events on July 30th. And I would like to point out that on a daily basis, the city relies on the police department and their officers, who are well-trained, to fairly and independently enforce the laws of the state and the city. I ask that citizens continue and this council continue to trust the police department to act appropriately and to respect the decisions that they make at the time of the event.
Do you have questions for my call?
If they have any questions, I'll respond.
Anybody have any questions for the city attorney? All right. Thank you, Stephen. Okay. Next is the Town Square Room Day. You guys have that memo on your desks and in the new council packet that's on the website. Anyone have questions on this one? I'll do my best to answer them. All right. And let's go to New Business. Our first item is committee appointments. We have two here for your motion and consideration.
I move the two appointments forward to the library board.
Motion by Lampy, seconded by Smith. Discussion on those. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. Next is, for your consideration, is appointment of the election inspectors.
Madam Mayor, I'll move for the appointment of the election inspectors.
Thank you. Motion by Ramline, seconded by Mr. Wetzel. Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, then let's go to the accounts payable.
Madam Mayor, I move to pay all accounts back.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Ramline, seconded by Mr. Lampy. Discussion on the accounts? Mr. Ritten?
Just for the record, for finances benefit, I am no longer an employee of Rooker Milky, so I do not have to abstain from any votes for their accounts.
Thank you for clarifying. Any other question or comments or questions? Ramline?
Aye.
Lampy?
Aye.
Aye.
Bart? Lick?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, let's go to Ms. Laney's business. You have reserve balances for the period ending June 3rd and the cash and investment summary from June 3rd, and then the credit card charges over $10,000 from June. Does anyone have any comments or questions on any of those reports? All right, then let's go to licenses. The first is just a memo to council outlining the actions of the licensing board. So let's go ahead and go to our application for a temporary Class B license for the Watertown Chamber of Commerce for its annual downtown water tunnel. This is on September 8th. The locations are listed in your agenda, and it's for 4:30 a.m.
I'll move to approve the temporary Class B license for the Chamber of Commerce.
Motion by Ritten. Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. Our next is an application for a temporary Class B license for the Marine Corps League Annual Picnic. This is on August 27th, from 12 to 7.
I would like to so-move.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Lampy, seconded by Mr. Ritten. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Our next is an application for a Class B beer license and a Class C wine license for Francesca's LLC, doing business as Rozati's, at 1907 Marketway, and Joseph Schreiber is the agent.
I'll move for approval for the Class B beer license and Class C liquor license, wine license, excuse me. For Rozati's.
Motion by Ritten, seconded by Mr. Wurz. Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, and let's go to our last. This is an application for a Class B beer and a Class C wine for Barris Brothers Cafe on there at 202 Air Park Drive. Peter Barris is the agent.
Also-move.
Thank you. Motion by Lampy.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Ritten. On this one. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, let's go to our resolutions. The first is Exhibit 9407. This is a resolution to remove a position of Executive Secretary Finance and reclassify it as Administrative Assistant in our payroll resolution. This is here from me and the Finance Committee.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
9407.
Motion by Lick, seconded by Ritten. Comments or questions? Mr. Schmidt?
Essentially, it's essentially an administrative title change, positioning step greater to the same pay, so it's already funded, it's just a title change. Okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, let's go to our next, which is Exhibit 9408. This is a resolution to add a position of Deputy Treasurer/Clerk to our payroll resolution. This is here from me and the Finance Committee.
I'll move for approval for Exhibit 9408.
Motion by Ritten.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Lampy. Questions on this one? Mr. Schmidt?
So it says that we have a savings account for the funding of the position. How many years is that covered before we have to increase the budget to compensate the position moving forward?
You know, I kind of fumbled here. We can answer your question, but I need to table this one anyway.
So, not for that reason.
We have an outstanding question to our consultant that they haven't... We put it in the packet assuming we'd have the answer, and we didn't have the answer in time for the meeting, so.
Move to table.
Thank you. Motion by Ramline, seconded by Schmidt. This is why I asked you, Mr. Smith, and I still swear to God. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Someone should have stopped me. All right. Our next one is Exhibit 9409. This is a resolution to amend the budget to increase occupied street slash sidewalk permit by $10,000 and increase engineering review fees by $10,000 for the utility accommodation permit review. This is here from me and the Finance Committee.
I'll move to approve Exhibit 9409.
Motion by Ritten. Seconded by Mr. Bartz. Questions on this one?
What is this relevant to?
So, we... Anytime that, for example, if someone wants to do work on a cell tower, on a cell pole, on one of our water towers... Actually, Jane Ellen's here too, I could defer to her, so I'll come to you, Jane Ellen, in case I screw this one up. There are review fees for that type of work and work similar to that, that we essentially take the money in, and then we have to move the money to then pay the bill in order to hire the appropriate architectural contractor to review a utility, this utility permit. I suspect Jane Ellen can speak to that a little bit more eloquently than I just did, though. Jane Ellen, can you give us a little overview, please?
Yes, there is a situation, as you said. We... Ordinance allows for us to charge review fees for telecommunications, utility-related utilities, and that's exactly what it is. It's that we receive money from the applicant to cover the review fees, and so money comes in from the utility applicant, and the money goes out to the city then with contractual with the consultant to do those reviews on the city's behalf.
So essentially, we're functioning as a middleman?
Yep. In this instance.
Yes.
Because it's our asset.
Okay. So it changes for case by case, essentially, more or less?
When you would see them, it would be anytime it was an asset for us. So if they're working on a water tower, you know, if a new cable company comes to Watertown and they have a bunch of work that, in order to put in their private utility, that would need to be reviewed, you'll see, you would see a similar transaction there.
Okay. So at the end of the day, this is a net zero wash for us?
Exactly. Yep, you got it.
Yes. And just for the record, Emily, I am caller number one. My audio went out on my computer.
Thank you for clarifying that. Other questions on this one? Megan?
Aye.
Bart?
Aye.
Schmidt? Schmidt?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Ramline?
Aye.
Lampy?
Aye.
Motion passed eight to zero. Okay. Let's go to our next. This is Exhibit 9410. This is a resolution for a proposed land donation of two parcels of land between Westhaven Drive and Boomer Street. This is here from me and the Finance Committee.
Also-move.
Motion by Wetzel, seconded by Ramline. Questions or discussion on this one? Yeah. Jane Ellen, you want to provide a quick review?
Yes. MSA consulting professionals had acquired land in West Haven subdivision a number of years back as part of land settlement for a design that they did for a client at that time that went belly-up. They retained three parcels at that time, one that was a detention pond that has now been turned over to their Stormwater Association, that left them with two parcels of wetland that have basically no significant land value and cannot be developed on. They happen to be adjoining properties to the city, and so it is the city's best interest to take ownership of this donated land that we will be able to use in the future for our MS4 and TMBL requirements that we have with the DNR. So this is a good opportunity for the city.
Thank you. Okay.
Any other questions? Wetzel?
Aye.
Ramline?
Aye.
Lampy?
Aye.
Ritten?
Aye.
Lick?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed eight to zero. Very good. Our next is Exhibit 9411. This is a resolution to approve the complete and final report on East Water Street, Herb, and Gutter. This is here from Alderman Wetzel and the Public Works Commission.
Move for 9411.
Thank you. Motion by Wetzel, seconded by Mr. Lick. Comments or questions on this one? Megan? Wetzel? Ramline?
Aye.
Ritten?
Aye.
Bart? Lick?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed eight to zero. All right, very good. Let's go to our next one, which is Exhibit 9412. This is a resolution to approve the complete and final report of the East Main Street sidewalk. Again, here from Alderman Wetzel and Public Works.
Madam Mayor, I'll move for 9412.
Motion by Ramline, seconded by Wetzel. Does anyone have any comments or questions on this one?
Okay, so what happened to Oak Hill Cemetery?
Mr. Wetzel, you can answer that one. What happened to Oak Hill?
I can do it effectively.
Or I can go to Jane Ellen.
I can, I can speak to it. So folks from Oak Hill spoke at the public hearing at the last council meeting stating that if they were assessed, they'd have a hard time paying for that because the city of Watertown largely funds their operations from year to year anyway, plus or minus $50,000 or so. If... And they've showed us their books every year, and it's about a net wash for them based on how the city funds them operate. Now, if they can't operate, then by default, the city takes over the cemetery and has to pay for all that the Cemetery Association does, and we don't want to be in that business. It's kind of messy. So we, at the Public Works meeting level, took out the assessment for Oak Hill because, well, it's, A, they can't afford it, and B, they don't have that much benefit for a sidewalk across their frontage.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ramline?
Aye.
Lampy?
Aye.
Ritten?
Aye.
Bart? Lick?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Abstained.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero. All right, very good. Our next is Exhibit 9413. We did receive a request to withdraw, withdraw the certification of assignment from the developer, so we will not... so we will not need to take any action on this one tonight. So with that, our next item is comments and suggestions from citizens present. Anyone would like to comment? The time?
So I had spoken this evening about under the color of law. If silk exotic were coming, were wanting to put on a performance in the park, there would not be a question as to what silk was about. Common sense would be used. We wouldn't get into legalisms and statutes. It just would be common sense that we understood what silk was about, sexual in nature, and, you know, children in the park wouldn't be exposed to that. Respectfully, when the city attorney says that drag queens can be sexual, but, you know, that's not a common sense. I don't believe that's a common sense position, respectfully, attorney. I don't believe that's a common sense position. And we should treat all parties equally. Including silk, there's equal protection clause in the Constitution. And we should treat all parties equally. I mentioned Loudoun County, where people turn a blind eye and, according, where people turned a blind eye to what was actually going on. And this stuff can end up dangerous. There were many decisions made before with legalisms and regulations that opened that county up, the children in that county up, to exploitation, abuse, and ultimately, two girls being raped. We don't need an environment, a growing environment created like that here. We need the city council to step up and act on the principle that silk or pole dancers, pole dancers came and said, oh, we're not going to be sexual. It's like, you know, there wouldn't be a question. Now, you know, I talked to an individual who was on the school board, and they had planned on letting boys into the girls bathrooms here in Watertown. See, we had that going on too? And they said, there's nothing you can do about it because we have an attorney. And then the school board member got an attorney who understood some of the things I speak of, and it changed everything, and the bathroom issue was dropped. So boys, males, were going to be apparently brought into ladies bathrooms now. Under the color of law, we are asking water, the city council, the mayor, the attorney, to act equally with each group and not turn a blind eye to what a drag queen is. They're inherently sexual. Silk is inherently sexual. Pole dancers are inherently sexual. Harleys are inherently noisy. We all know this. It's the very core of these things, the very core of the drag queen is that. And we were going to have boys apparently coming into the ladies bathroom, the girls bathrooms in Watertown schools. And there were many decisions made before that happened in Loudoun, before it got to that point where males were going into the girls bathroom. And there were many officials involved in those decisions that opened up the county to that type of environment, that environment, the county's children to be in a position to be exploited, abused, and ultimately rape several girls. And you know what? One child in Watertown is too much. So we need to have an environment, and we need to be honest and not use legalisms and be regulated to death. To prevent the protection of Watertown's children, it's a good start to acknowledge what a drag queen is all about and to not have non-consensual contact between minors and a drag queen in Riverside Park. We haven't had that forever in generations in Riverside Park. We don't need the legacy of this city council and the mayor and all other officials here to be that. Protect our children and protect our girls and boys.
Thank you.
I guess I'm confused. Some time ago, I spoke with Mr. Lampy, and you were very, very nice in trying to explain the change of policies, which took away your vote, your vote, your vote, your vote, your vote, your vote, and your vote. And it's like, like I said before, we, Watertown elected you people, but yet you don't have a vote. What is that all about? How come these people here that supposedly represent us have no vote? Could that be explained to us? You know, we come up here and we talk, and we talk, and we talk, but we don't get any feedback. Now, the only feedback we get is we've been ignored, and the permit's going to be given, and there's no feedback to us. And what about these representatives that are supposed to be supporting the people? You know, how do they feel? I'd like to be able to say, how would you vote? And how would you vote? And how would you vote? But they don't have a voice. Why don't they have a voice? Would, I would like, we would like that answer. I know Mr. Lampy was very pleasant with me, very nice, but I don't understand the hierarchy and what has changed it to take away our representative's vote. Can we hear the answer to that? How can we get that information to us? Why don't they have a vote? One question. How can we get that information? Can you text us? Can you, I mean, we need an answer. Why don't they have a vote?
Sure. So I can, I can certainly chat with you after to explain it, explain it to you. The city attorney provided a response to the questions that have been asked, I think, most frequently. So we were trying to give some level of response back so people didn't feel ignored. And so people felt heard. But I can explain it to you once our meeting is over. Anyone else that would like to comment?
Also, respectfully, you asked why or what makes you think children should have to go or be exposed to that? I answered that when I said, if you don't like it or you don't support it, then don't go. Respectfully, the city attorney did absolutely explain, in layman's terms, why it should be allowed and why it is actually a First Amendment right that we allow everybody to express how they feel. And that includes people that you do not morally agree with. No one is saying they're going to do anything awful. There are drag queens out there who actually aren't even gay. So I don't know why we're making this all about sexualizing our kids. It's a performance, just like theater is a performance. You don't have to agree with me, but you don't have to belittle people who feel that way.
Anybody else that would like to comment?
If you look, if you go to Wikipedia and search the definition of gay, it's a homosexual. If you go to Wikipedia and get the definition of drag queen, it is a homosexual male dressed up in women garb. That's the definition on Wikipedia.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. With that, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Lampy, seconded by Lick. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, guys. Thank you, everybody. Thanks, Dan.